Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, March 22, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey
Right, so.
Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 10, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 29, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 29, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and a decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. For anyone calling in on the telephone to raise your hand, you press star nine. Thank you.
Wendell, you're muted.
Me, wow. Okay, can we have a roll call? Thank you.
Mr. Cantor?
Yeah.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti has been excused. Mr. Orozco?
Yeah.
Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Stanton?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for a pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Tropoli, you mind swearing in the professionals, please?
Sure. Professionals, please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
I do.
All right, thank you. The record should reflect tonight, we have Ms. Bell, Mr. Cunliffe, Mr. Howard, and Ms. Spiro, all sworn. And Mr. Chair, just pointing out, I believe Mr. Stanton will be sitting tonight as a voting member.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of minutes.
I have no minutes this evening.
Vouchers.
I have no vouchers this evening.
No. Correspondence.
I have no correspondence this evening.
Wow. Do we have any cases tonight?
Yes, we do.
Okay, okay. Just making sure. Okay, resolution. Case number BA 2122, Demetria Roman. Resolution granting bulk variance for the construction of single-family dwelling with a septic system on an undersized lot. Eligible voters: Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Seiya, Stanton, Nansen.
Mr. Chairman? Seiya? I make a motion to move in.
Second?
Second. Hughes.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution's memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, application before the board. Case number BA 2102, Singh and Carr? You have to correct me on that name. Bulk variance, application, Pushcinder, Singh, and Idar Kerr, as applicant and owner seeking bulk variance approval for one-story addition to an existing single-family dwelling in Paver Patio on East Side Yard in premises known as Block 59, Lot 1.143, Rubin Court. Expiration date, June 12, 2021. Are they on the meeting?
Give me one second.
Okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
Yes, hi. My name is Inthe Deep Court, and my husband, Pushbin Dasing.
Hold on, do you have two things on, a phone and a computer, because we're getting feedback?
I just turned it off, the second one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Right. Mr. Chairman, shall I swear the two witnesses in first?
We've got one more, Mr. Pushcinder?
I think they're, are they all together on one screen? It looks like they may be.
Yes, we are together.
You are together. Okay.
Okay.
You seem to be on twice, that's why I'm asking.
That's why I'm asking.
Right. Okay. Eileen, are you getting any feedback, or are we fine? Okay.
We're fine right now.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'll swear the witnesses.
There they are. Okay.
Okay, yes. Perfect. Folks, would you raise your right hand, please? And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. And, sir, may we have your name?
Pushbin Dasing.
Thank you. And ma'am?
Inthe Deep Court.
Okay. Thank you.
I apologize for messing up your names here. I just, I don't run across those very often, so. Okay, what brings you to us this evening?
We are the owners of Three Rubin Court, as you know, so we're here for-
You need to speak into the mic. We can barely hear you.
Sure. Am I audible now?
Little better, yes.
I'm here for a variance request. Since we purchased the house in 2010, we have made no exterior modifications, and Hello?
Yeah, very good.
Okay, so I'm gonna start now. So since we moved to the house in 2010, we've made no exterior modifications to the house, and we will conform with the township requirements to keep construction outside of the easement buffer.
Okay. Okay. Charlie, I'm gonna let you jump in.
Um, I think actually it would be good if Matt might want to jump in real quick. I think there were some prior land use approvals. Matt, if you don't mind, with the patio on the back and the sidewalk on the side of the property, and then I'll let me lead into it.
Okay.
Think you might be muted, Matt.
You're on mute, Matt. There you go.
A little bit of research on the property, because we noticed that there was some encroachments, it looks like, into the easement. Property is rather unique in the sense that it has a rather large, I believe it's a conservation easement in the rear, as well as what wraps around the side. So there's very little room in the rear yard, even though they have 7,500 feet in the rear yard, they actually have very little usable space. So what we noticed when we looked at the survey was that there was a walking path on the side of the house, as well as a very small encroachment from the patio in the rear. I did some research. I could confirm that the path on the side, which is nothing more than a three-foot-wide pathway just from the backyard around to the front, was permitted in, by a previous land use officer. So it has permits. It was shown on the plan as it is on the site. Whether that should have been approved at the time or not, I think is probably not relevant. As for the patio, also, we have permits for that in the rear. It was before time that this department really did inspections. So even though it looks like what was proposed size-wise and dimensions-wise was built, it showed that there would be a few feet of room between the buffer and where the porch ended. It turns out that the very last block probably of that patio is right on the easement line. I wouldn't even say it's a full foot beyond into the easement, but it looks like partially it is. So those are a bit of the encroachments that are on site that you'll see, and discussion to some degree with the changes that are proposed elsewhere on the site.
Okay, Matt, Lot 101, 1.01? What is, what is, what is that there?
Hang on. It's, I believe that's another residential house.
It is, and there's a conservation easement in front of that one also?
Let me pull it up really quick.
So, Mr. Chair, there's definitely a 75-foot conservation easement along the rear of the property that abuts Aldridge Road, and then along the west side, there's a 50-foot conservation easement that upsets that residential property, but I don't think there's anything on that Lot 1.01. It's just solely on the applicant's subject property.
Okay, well, what is 1.01 being used for?
That's residential dwelling.
It is a dwelling.
Yeah, so this is, this is all conservation easements that were provided, because this was a major subdivision years ago. I think it was actually 2004, so that's the typical 50-foot conservation easement you would see around a major subdivision. Actually, the 75 feet, that's the first time that I've actually seen that on a file map, so that's a little bit of a, you know, 25 feet more than what would typically be required by ordinance, so.
Right, okay.
Along Aldridge Road, and what the pattern of development is on Aldridge Road is major subdivision after major subdivision branching off. So you have, depending on the age of the subdivision and what the ordinance was at the time, you have some streets coming off where they have a perimeter buffer. You have individual lots that were done with minor subdivisions that didn't get the buffer, and then you have some roads that came off that don't have any buffers at all, because it was before our ordinances were strictly enforced on that. So like Charlie had said, the lot next door, looks like it was part of a minor subdivision, didn't have a buffer, and the buffer was assessed on this subdivision when it came in. And like Charlie had said, too, 75 feet, it's actually inconsistent with the lots right next to it in the same subdivision, where they only have a 50-foot buffer. Not quite sure where the 75 came from, but it's here.
Okay, is there any sort of easement in the front, you know, utility easement, that could be part of that?
Not that I saw, no.
Okay.
So really, Mr. Chair, the subject of the application in the east side yard, where there is no conservation easement, the applicant's proposing a 335 square-foot addition, one-story addition to the side of the house, which requires setback variance. Actually, let me make sure I got that one correctly there. Yeah, so 20 feet is required for the side yard in this zone, the R2, where they're proposing 10 feet, and there's also a patio that's proposed with this addition to the rear of that addition. The setback requirement for residential patios is 10 feet, the applicant's proposing 6.4. We received subsequent additional submittals in regards to the patio at the rear of the existing structure. So what's out there right now is a two-tiered patio, so you walk out, there's a landing, a couple steps, a large patio, and then a step down to a smaller patio. That lower patio that puts up to the 75-foot conservation easement, the applicant is now proposing to install a pool on that patio. And from our measurements, like Matt mentioned, it appears from the dimensions and the scaling that, of course, a block extends into that conservation easement. It looks like the pool is proposing to maintain that existing footprint of what's out there. You know, so if the board were to grant approval for the pool, you know, it would technically be within, or the walkway for the pool would be within that conservation easement. As far as the setback requirements for pools and walkways, the paver patio on the pool is compliant with all setback requirements. 10, 10 foot is required to the edge of all walkways for pools. So they're complying from that perspective. It's just a matter of that existing paver patio in the back is in the buffer, and they're now proposing to construct a pool kind of within that same footprint with a three-foot-wide, you know, walkway around the perimeter of it.
Do you see any issue with that, Charlie?
So, you know, really, we had an extensive application regarding, you know, improvements within a conservation easement. And, you know, I know this board, in that instance, required those improvements to be removed. What I would ask from the Sings is, you know, is there any ability to pull back on the patio? Are you 100% on the pool? Or what? You know, is a pool just an after-the-fact addition? We'd like to have this, or, you know, is it, the addition was what you mainly came in for, and then the pool, you'd like to have it too? Because I think what we're looking at right now is, you know, for the board to grant disturbance into that conservation easement, you know, we've had some history with that, and, you know, I think that causes some problems for the board's perspective.
Yeah, but Charlie, if they don't go outside what the existing footprint is, I don't, they had a permit to put that patio in, so I don't see how us as a board could deny something.
So, yeah, I mean, if it was granted a prior land use approval and the board doesn't take exception to it, I would just strongly preface it by, you know, the applicant's got to strongly adhere to the existing setbacks to where that patio is. We've had issues in the past where people have gotten approvals for pools and walkways, and then they get an ASBIL survey after someone builds it, you know, and things are a lot more extensive than what the board reviewed and approved. I just don't want to see this applicant before the board, you know, six months after any approval, you know, having to come back again for relief for something that, you know, was constructed above and beyond what was approved by the board.
Yes, sir, Mr. Seiya.
The chairman, Charlie. So if this is an R2 zoning, are you telling me that this property is approximately 20,000 square feet?
Let me pull up in the survey with the schedule. Hold on a second there. If they have it on here. Yeah, so the lot is 20, just under 27,000 square feet, where 20,000 is required.
You know, Mr. Chairman, this is the travesty of years past.
Yes.
And this is the thing that I fought so profusely early on, when I first got into town, how they were cramming things in up against these easements and these buffers, and not giving the, the landowner is, got such few usable property because of all of these conditions that are in place. And, you know, there's gotta be some relief here, in my opinion, over.
Yeah, no, I know which case that Charlie is talking about, and, you know, I, my only issue with this is, they got permit. This was done under permits. And, you know, Matt could verify that. That, you know, everything that's placed there had permits to be built, and they built it there. And, you know, I, going outside these perimeters, I would say that we might have issues, but as long as they're staying within those perimeters, I don't see where the board, you know.
Mr. Chair, to add on to that, and Matt can correct me too, if I'm not mistaken, those are all permits that were by the prior owner, too, so this is not something that was self-created by the current applicant.
Exactly.
But, but, yes.
Board's reference, you know, when I come across this on my regular land use decisions, I do weigh heavily on if a permit was, if they're doing something within the confines of a permit that was issued, I try not to strip away those rights, you know, that were given by that permit. So just something to consider on a day-to-day land use decision. I kind of would agree with the chairman and Mr. Seiya.
So, Mr. Chairman, one other thing.
Yes.
All right. I'm hearing that there's a 50-foot buffer right alongside them with one property, and there's a 75. How do we justify that?
Well, actually, actually, Mr. Seiya, there's a 50-foot conservation buffer and a 75-foot conservation buffer on this same property.
Yes, so they're, they're in the case where they're on the corner of the subdivision, so it actually wraps on the side and the rear, and the one side is 50 foot, the rear is 75 feet, which is atypical for, so, I mean, if this was 50 foot all the way around, this would be a moot point for the patio in the rear. We wouldn't really be having this discussion.
Let me see it.
Yep. You have to blow it up a little bit there. Okay. You see to the right there, Mr. Seiya, that's a 50-foot buffer. To the, to the Aldridge roadside is a 75-foot buffer. Okay, there's two conservation easements on this property. One is 50 foot, and one is 75 feet. That, that's what creates the issue. However, they do have building permits for the sidewalks and the patio in the rear. They, the previous owner, they followed through, they got the permits, the permits were issued, the construction was done. So if I heard correctly, and Charlie can correct me if I'm wrong, the new, the owners want to put in a pool back there, but they're putting this pool in the existing footprint. And, you know, where, that's where, if they're gonna stay within that footprint, I don't think this board really could deny that for that reason, because, you know, there was already building permits issued for that. So, you know.
So, and just to your point, Mr. Chair, this is something as far as the board is gonna rule and acknowledge that that was granted permits, and that was, you know, already previously existing. I just want to stress for the applicant that I strongly encourage that they enlist a surveyor and make sure that they get like a stakeout to make sure that the pool and then the walkway matches what's out there now. I don't want you to have to come back, you know, six months from now, if whoever does the work for you, you know, adds another two feet onto the end of the patio, you know, that could potentially cause you an issue, so.
Right.
I understand.
That, do you understand what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. If you have any questions, ask now, you know. But as far as the addition to the house, they're really not encroaching anywhere, right? Except there are setback issues, correct?
Yeah, so in the side yards, the east side yard, so on the plan that Matt had shown, it would be on the left-hand side as you're facing the dwelling.
Correct.
The side yard setback requirement is 20 feet. They're proposing 10 feet from the westerly side yard. And then also behind that, they're adding another paver patio behind that addition. Paver patios are required to have a 10-foot setback from side yards or from all property lines, rear and side, and 6.4 is proposed.
Now, Lot 1.15, is there a house on there?
Yeah, that's a single-family dwelling.
Okay, there is a house on there.
It is, sir.
What would be the distance from, whenever the completion of the addition would be? See, they, my plan doesn't show that new addition.
Sir, that would be minimum 20 to 30 feet from the other house.
But see, Charlie?
Yeah.
You know, I really don't understand this, because if you look at Lot 1.15, why is that a 50-foot conservation easement?
I can't tell you. You'd have to ask someone that was with the board when that was filed back in 2004. Like I said, and Matt noted, it's pretty atypical. It's the only lot, I think, in that subdivision that has a 75-foot, where everywhere else is 50 feet, so.
Yeah, I don't understand that. I really don't.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's on a file map, and it's not something that the board, I don't think, can move at this time, you know. So, and just to clarify for you, Mr. Chair, I'm just on Google or scaling it. So that next-door neighbor, from the corner, so the northwest corner of their house to the, approximately the lot line, plus or minus 30 feet. So if they're 10 foot to their addition, you're looking at approximately 40 feet from the addition to the neighbor's house.
Right.
10 foot to the side yard, to the side property line.
Now, are they expanding outside the footprint of their existing house?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a 335 square-foot addition in the easterly side yard. The approximate dimensions, and Matt can put it back up, but it's, uh,
Do we have a picture of the proposed site plan?
Where there's that 14.07 dimension, that's the attached area is the addition, and then right to the top-hand side of that is the proposed steps and patio.
Okay. Wow. Okay. Well, Charlie, what do you feel on that addition as far as the 10-foot? You think?
I mean, really, it's up to the board. So I guess for the applicant, so you're proposing like pure foundations, concrete footings, and like wood posts to support that?
Sonotubes.
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 So is the existing grade under that gonna maintain what it is now? And are you gonna be able to grade that area? Right now, the lot, Mr. Chair, generally flows in a south-to-north direction towards Rubin Court. So, you know, as part of that improvements, you know, the applicant's just gonna make, need to make sure they maintain the existing drainage pattern, that everything continues to drain towards Rubin Court. You know, we might need to see their engineer on this pool plot plan add some additional grades in the side yard, just to make sure water's not getting dammed in between the patio that's existing, the one that's proposed, and that water can freely, you know, run to Rubin Court, not cause any water issues. As far as the pool, do you know how you're gonna handle backwash? Are you gonna have like a salt filter with cartridges? Like a drywall that you could drain it to, direct it to the street?
Cartilage filter.
Engineer has informed us that the stormwater runoff will not be increased, because the pool is placed within the existing paver patio and is, and is directed towards Rubin Court on the west side. I'm just reading from the notes I took on my call. And backwashing, he said, we will provide cartilage filters with no backwash required.
Okay. And then, Mr. Chair, really, it's up to the board. Anytime we have an increase in impervious coverage, you know, whether we want to have them required to put in drywells just to mitigate any runoff. Having said that, there's an existing inlet right on Rubin Court. If they direct roof leaders right to Rubin Court, you know, most of that runoff's gonna get into the existing conveying system, you know, right on Rubin Court, and the slopes are pretty substantial coming from Aldridge Road to the front of the property. So it doesn't look like there's significant low areas. And then, I would just say, Mr. Chair, regarding the patio and the pool, you know, the applicant's just got to make sure that, you know, their engineer provides appropriate grading around that to make sure that we're not causing any water issues. Like I said, that everything on the back where the conservation easement is, is getting directed to the side yards and run into Rubin Court, where not have any standing water issues. But for me, that's predominantly the questions and concerns that I have. I don't know if any of the board members have anything additional.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go to Christine real quick. Christine, do you have any input here?
Yeah, I think, you know, given the constraints of the site, just that so much of it is encumbered by the conservation easements, I think they're, they're really doing the best they can. The, I think the side yard setback variance is reasonable, and they are only proposing the pool within areas they've already been given permits for.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board? Mr. Seiya?
Well, I just wanted to make sure Mr. Tropoli is catching everything that Charlie's saying. Mr. Tropoli? Because that's pretty important, the, you know, if this application moves forward, I'd like to make sure that, in the resolution, that those leaders do lead towards, you know, that runoff where Charlie's saying it's best place for drainage.
It'll be in the resolution as well as the site constraints that Ms. Bell and Mr. Cunliffe-
It'll be in the resolution as well as the site constraints that Miss Bell and Mr. Conlit both, um, reveal. As Charlie said, there's a seventy five foot conservation easement at the rear and a fifty foot conservation easement to the, um. To the west side, I believe it is. The, um, you you know, it's a tight site. I did, uh, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I had a question or two I'd like to ask the applicants, just to flesh out the resolution. Uh, just so we can get the need on the record as to what it is they propose in that particular expansion. And how they intend to use the expansion. So that would be my my question, uh, to, um, either, um. Mr. Singh or Miss Kaller. How is the expansion going to be used?
So, um, this, um, the idea for for constructing came, um. Uh, I have some, um, I would not call it disabilities, but I have some health issues. For which I needed therapy and I was doing aquatics, uh, to keep up with my recovery. I'm fairly young, so. The chances of recovery are fairly, I mean, there's a good, uh, scope. So, but when Corona hit, I have, I cannot go for any of my therapy sessions. And that's when my husband and me, we decided that we're going to invest in the machinery and bring it for my exercise. And that's that is how, um, we are giving on the our patio. To build a small pool so that I can keep up with my exercise. And the room is going to be a multipurpose room. My kids can do homework there. I can have my therapy sessions there. And the the reason that, uh, the the small patio I asked, uh, requested for behind. Is so that I have a I in like a platform to walk to the pool straight, so that there are no drifts. Or so that there's less possibility for me to, uh, fell. So, uh, just for my accurate, like, I can walk properly. So I wanted the path to be set, you know, so that I can walk directly from my exercise to aquatics. That's that's what I'm trying to create there. So that's the only, that's why we came up with this, and we don't see, uh, the Corona going too soon. So this will became my, uh, urgency.
Oh, thank you for your testimony. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Sayah, any anything further?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mertens? Yeah, I just have one question for the applicants, the fence for the pool, what type of fence are you gonna have in the rear of the, you know, around the pool?
Four feet, uh, the four feet metal, uh, uh, fence, we're gonna have it around the pool.
Okay, um, I don't have an issue with, you know, basically everything on this application. My, I just want to make sure we have that fence where it's not gonna be an issue down the road, so, uh, would that be an issue, Charlie or Matt?
Well, when they file pool permits, I imagine they're gonna have to provide some kind of construction detail format, and they'll review that, make sure it's compliant with the pool code. And also the attachment code, and it is in a rear yard, so, uh, you know, there's no issue with height or openness, I don't believe.
But you have a three foot path around the pool, but the fence would would actually not be on top of the pavers. It would actually be on the outside of them, right?
It will be on top of the retaining wall.
Okay, okay, well, then I'm good, thank you. Mr. Hughes.
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, I think everything's been covered for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cantor.
Uh, no questions, sir.
Mr. Gonzalez.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Roscoe.
Oh.
Mr. Stanton.
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add two quick clarifying comments, I think it's just important to get on the record, so, um. The addition, I would just, uh, I think it's important that the board put some kind of condition that it be finished to match the aesthetic of the existing house. You know, as best as possible, so it doesn't just stand out as, uh, you know, an after the fact kind of thing. Uh, and then also, um, they're building a pool and an addition, there's gonna be some construction equipment that goes in there. So any sidewalk or curb that gets damaged is gonna have to be replaced, um, you know, if it should get damaged. And then I just wanna note with the construction with the pool and things like that, um, there's a possibility that there may be some minor disturbances. Of the conservation easement just to put the improvements in. I would just say, I don't take issue with that as long as there be a condition approval that. The manicured lawn areas be restored back to what they are, you know, to their existing condition, um, that no additional improvements be proposed.
Yes.
Yes. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Christine, do you have planning that you wanna put into this?
Um, nothing else, I think, other than what I previously stated. I think, uh, Mr. Conlit's, uh, suggestion that the architecture of the addition, uh, meet the. Uh, exterior of the rest of the house as, uh, best as possible is a good one, and I'd recommend that be put in also.
Okay, since there's no further questions, I'll take a motion to open the public.
Motion to open the public, Hughes.
Motion by Mr. Hughes.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Sayah, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Eileen, at this time, we'll open the public for comments and questions.
Okay, for any members of the public that are watching or listening to the hearing. The chairman has opened the hearing up for questions and comments on this application. Anyone wishing to do so, please use the raise your hand feature, and we'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. And we have Caesar Ulan here. Oh, it's not doing anything, I'm sorry. Caesar, do you have audio and video? If you can, please put them on.
That's what I'm trying to do now. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we need your video, sir.
I don't know where it went. Hold on.
There you go.
Okay.
Right, sorry about that. Right, before you begin, I need to swear you in. If you raise your right hand.
Okay.
Yes, sir, raise your right hand, thank you.
You see it?
I can, I sure can. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. I know, I just wanna.
Your name?
Yeah, my name is Caesar. My name is Caesar Ulan. I'm the owner of the property on fifty four dot oh one. Uh, in the rear of the, uh, applicant's, uh, property. And, uh.
What 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 was that?
Uh, fifty four point oh one, lot seventeen. In the rear, in the rear of their property.
Okay, uh, Aldridge Road is at the rear of their property.
Right, I'm I face Aldridge Road.
Oh, okay, so you're across the street.
No, no. I believe I back up to their property.
What's your address?
At three eighty five Aldridge. It's fifty four oh one, lot seven.
Fifty four oh one. Hey, Matt?
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna pop a map in a second.
Yeah.
Uh, the subject site is up here where my cursor is.
Right.
And then, Mr. Ulan's site is the green hatching here.
Oh, okay, got you. Okay, Mr. Ulan?
Yeah, no, so all I was saying is, uh, thank you for the invitation. I got the letter, I called in. Um, I wanted to express to you, Chairman, and everyone on the board, how great a job you guys did do it, because some of the questions I had, you guys covered. So I just wanted to add to that and say congratulations. Hopefully this gets approved and the, uh, applicants get what they need, especially given that it's for therapy.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
No, thank you. You guys, you guys are doing a great job, so I appreciate that.
It it's really difficult. If you're ever interested, put in your application. We need, always need somebody.
Right. Well, no, I just figured I'd share that with you guys, because I'm sure you probably don't hear it often. But in light of participating, um, I wanted to express that to you.
Thank you very much, sir. It's very much appreciated.
Hey.
Okay, Eileen, do we have anybody else?
Are there any other members of the public wishing to ask questions or comments on this application? Please use the raise your hand feature so we can bring you into the hearing. I'm not seeing anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay, can I have a motion to close public?
Make a motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Sayah, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Roscoe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. I'm gonna go back to the applicant. Would you like to make a closing statement or anything? And we'll see what the board has to say.
I would, I mean, first of all, um, I would like to thank you all. Um, because the, through this process of filing, I think, uh, I was and I was guided. And, you know, at every step, and if this grant, I'll be very grateful.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, Charlie, Christine, do y'all have any further?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Nothing further.
Matt, do you have anything else to, you get, okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Thank you, thank you very much, and I I would like to express the same feeling as Mr. Caesar did, so so thank you very much for.
Yes.
Listening to us and and hopefully we get the permission to, and that's our intent to to say it, conform with everything, and stay with them.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sayah.
So, you know, I would like to make a motion that in accordance with all the stipulations. That Mr. Tropoli has recorded from both Christine and Mr. Conlit. And that these fine people who are taxpaying citizens and live here in Howell Township, that this this application. Uh, be granted and and approved, over.
Thank you, Mr. Sayah. Do I have a second?
I'd like to echo, uh, Mr. Sayah's sentiments, and and with with everything that's been put on the record, I would like to second his motion.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, Eileen, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
I too agree with what my fellow board members had stated, and all the findings of facts, it's been placed on the record. And, you know, it, the the piece of property you have is a unique piece of property. It it's very difficult as a homeowner to to look at that many square feet. And say, I can't use it. It's it's very difficult to do that. Uh, the, if the permits weren't on there, we might have a different outcome here. But all the permits are in place, and the hardship, you know, is basically on you guys. And I I feel that y'all have met that burden of proof, and I wish y'all all the luck in the world, so my vote is yes also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Feel better.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
You can check with me tomorrow, and I'll tell you what your next steps are, okay?
Yes, I'll be there.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
You too. Uh, do we need a little break, or we'll wanna move to the next case? Okay, case number BA twenty one oh four, Ralph Geraldine Martinez. Well, variance, application Ralph and Geraldine Martinez is the applicant owner seeking a bulk variance approval. To construct the swimming pool within associated concrete walkways and patios. Within required say sideset, side and rear yard setbacks on premises known as lot one point two one. Lot three. Sixty one Deborah Lane, expiration date June twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. I've gotta get better lighting in here, I'm sorry. Okay.
One second.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mrs. Martinez, do we need to bring anyone else into the meeting?
No, it's just us.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Mr. Tropoli.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll swear the witnesses in. Okay, Ralph and Geraldine, would you please raise your right hands? I'll swear both of you in. Do you swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth? The whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Yes, and can we have your names for the record, please?
Ralph Martinez.
And Geraldine Martinez.
Okay, all sworn, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, what brings you here tonight?
Uh, we would like to add an in-ground swimming pool in our backyard.
Okay, is there anything there now?
Um, no, it's just a grassy, grass area. There used to be a partially above ground pool there before from a previous owner. When we purchased it, it was already removed, and then we just replaced it with grass at that time.
Okay, now, uh, lot nine behind you, what what is on lot nine, do you know, right behind you?
That's our neighbor's backyard. They have a pool also and a deck and some grass as well behind our fence.
Okay. Okay, so what we're gonna be putting in is a ground pool and then also the concrete. Uh, pave, is it concrete pavers or concrete?
Concrete.
Okay. Charlie, you wanna jump in now?
You're muted, Charlie.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah, so, uh, am I sharing my screen? Can you guys see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is the existing survey of the property that they submitted with their application. Um, as you can see, north is to the right here, uh, it's a two-story frame dwelling. Uh, pretty much the entire rear of the property is, uh, covered with a concrete patio. Uh, the rear and the south and north side yard up to almost the front of the dwelling. There's a cutout and open space in the middle there, uh, where the remnants of a prior pool used to be. Uh, the applicant submitted with their applications some prior permits from the previous owner, uh, for an above ground pool. Um, looking at the aerials, it, uh, certainly seems like that was in that area. Uh, this is just a two thousand two Google Earth aerial, um, that I went back to, so you can see, think ninety five. Sometimes between ninety five and two thousand two is when this whole subdivision was approved. They got their permits, I wanna say, in the early two thousands, uh, for the pool. Uh, this is in the R three zone. There's no restriction on impervious coverage in the zone. Uh, so, uh, had this come into us now, I don't know that this would be something that we would approve with this much, uh, concrete all over the back of the property line. All over the back of the property. Um, with the current application, the looks like the applicant. This is part of their pool permit plan that was submitted with the application. It looks like they're ro- proposing to remove the entire concrete. In the northerly side yard, is that correct?
Correct.
And then, is there any concrete to be removed around the south and the rear with the pool? Um, or or what's what's the plan there? I know you you've got a, what's the dimensions of the pool there?
Fourteen by twenty eight.
Yeah, fourteen by twenty eight. Are you ripping up all the concrete and putting in a new patio? Or is it you're trying to retain what's there and work with what's there?
We plan on removing all the existing concrete.
Okay, so really what's triggering the relief, uh, Mr. Chair, is the ordinance requires a ten foot setback. Um, to the coping of all pools. When there's a walkway proposed around it, the setback is proposed is is measured to the, uh, walkway. So in the southerly side yard, the setback that's proposed is, um. Five point one feet where ten feet is required, and the westerly side yard, um. Uh, five feet is proposed where ten foot is required. And really, this patio is an extension of the the walkway around the pool. I also put it in there. We have the requirement that residential patios need to be ten foot from property lines where five foot is proposed. So what's on the site right now, um, they're proposing a considerable amount. So what's on the site right now, they're proposing a considerable amount of reduction in the impervious area. I think I put in my letter, it's almost just under 2,200 square feet of impervious coverage that's being removed from the property that's out there with the application.
Charlie.
And to give the board some context, I was in correspondence with Eileen, I got the subdivision approvals for this property. The lot generally grades in a northeasterly direction. So looking at the plan that's up there, it's the top left-hand corner to the bottom right-hand corner. Should the board rule favorably on the application, we're gonna need a little bit more refined grading with this plan. This is just a scanned copy of, I guess, what they're... Who put this together? Did you have an engineer? Did the pool company put this together or?
It was an engineer who works with the pool company.
Okay, so I think as a condition of any approval, should the board rule favorably on this, Mr. Chair, we're gonna need to see a little bit more refined grading in this area between the concrete and the fence, making sure that water runs north and then south in the side yard. Same thing in the southerly side yard runs east towards Deborah Lane. Backwash with the pool, are you guys proposing like cartridges, a dry well? You're directing it to Deborah Lane with pipe or what are you proposing with that?
So also we're directing it to Deborah Lane with a pipe. We have to finalize those plans with the pool company.
Do you know where the closest like storm drain is? Like are you gonna run it all the way to the curb line or?
So if you look at Deborah Lane, it's on the corner of the driveway, almost where your hand is.
Okay, so you actually, you're saying you have a storm drain right next to your driveway that you can tie that to?
Exactly where that hand is right now.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Just a real quick question.
Yep.
Okay, since there's concrete in the backyard right now. Okay, that goes all the way to the fence line, correct?
Yep.
If this, if they didn't take any of the concrete out, just come in and cut in a new pool. You know, they could do that without really, because it's existing, correct?
So you'd have to trace it back and see if there was any regulations that required and what was proposed at the time of the pool permit and things like that. You know, Matt might be able to tell you exactly when we require the 10-foot setback and everything like that.
Yeah, but if it was done back in 1995, I don't think we had a 10-foot setbacks.
Yeah, it's early 2000s, I think, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, 2004 is when the rules changed from 10 feet to the water's edge to 10 feet to the edge of concrete. Before that, I don't think there was any consideration as to what was gonna be between the water's edge and the property line.
Okay, now, when, when was this done?
2004.
What's that?
2004.
No, I know, but when, when was all the concrete or the permit on this?
I didn't look to see if there's any permits. Chances are it might have been an expansion over time, but I didn't, I didn't notice any permits in the files.
Okay, for the pool?
Earth shows it was there in 2002.
Yeah, so I think there was permits for the pool, Mr. Chair, and whether or not it depicted the concrete and things like that. You know, this is a 2002 Google Earth aerial, so if, you know, if the ordinance didn't come into place in 2004, a lot of this, you know, existed prior to that ordinance adoption.
So technically, Charlie, if, if they left all that concrete, there's nothing could be done about it anyway, correct?
Potentially, I mean, they still have to show that there's no detriment to the adjacent properties or anything like that. You know, that's, they're in the board, they're in before the board seeking relief of the current standards. So yes, I think with what they're doing, it's gonna be a substantial improvement above what's there now, you know what I mean? They're removing, you know, 2,200 square feet of impervious area. That's, you know, that's a big chunk of impervious coverage being removed from the property, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sayah.
So this is a R3 zoning.
Yes.
With a piece of property that's a little over 8,000 square feet. You know, Charlie, what was this part of that, where was the trade-off here, Charlie?
Yeah, so they're removing 2,200 square feet. That's almost 25% of the lot cover that they're removing with, with taking out that concrete, so.
Yeah, but I'm saying the R3 zoning, where was the trade-off when this development was built?
Oh, you're talking about like as far as an open space lot and things like that?
Yeah, because I mean, this lot, this lot should be 15,000 square feet, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that was created by file map, you know, I'm just looking at right now. I believe this, and, you know, I don't have the tax map, I believe the open space portion of this subdivision is this wooded area, you know, on the, on the east side of Deborah Lane. So I mean, the lot itself is by file map, it's lawfully existing, you know what I mean? It's, there's no impervious coverage restrictions in the zone. So, you know, what they're proposing, I think, is a significant enhancement over what's existing there now just by removing a quarter of the lot area of impervious, of impervious coverage that exists there now.
Well, I, I agree, but again, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Another situation where when we, you know, traded off R3 zoning for open space, condensed the housing, we, you know, I was the proponent that always said, hey, look, we gotta push these homes a little forward, you know, not the 27-foot depth, but, you know, maybe give us seven, eight, 10 feet, you know, forward, so we got some room back there to do something with it.
Oh, I totally agree, Mr. Sayah, but that's, that's where it...
It boggles my mind.
I know, it does me too, what the thinking was back then. Because it makes it, it makes it awful difficult for a new homeowner to come in and buy a home and then they come to find out that they can't really do what they wanted to do.
Absolutely.
So I totally agree with you and I, that's why we're here to try to help them, you know, get by as much as we can. And I too agree with Mr. Conlin that, you know, taking out 25% of that concrete there and bringing it back to where it's pervious coverage, you know, that, that's pretty decent to what it was, what it is now. So, you know, that, that's what we gotta try to figure out.
I agree, Charlie, thank you.
So, and then just to clarify, Mr. Chair, too, so with the impervious coverage, you know, that they're reducing on the site, they are improving the setback to the walkway that's existing there now from what the previous pool used to be. I don't have a dimension on here, but you can see this is, you know, pretty narrow on the pool permit plan. You know, they're now going to 5 feet along the west and, sorry, to the south and then to the west, which is the rear. So they are improving, you know, the setback from the existing property lines to the new outer edge of their, of their, of their pool. You know, I just do want to know, and I think it's something for the board just to discuss whether or not, you know, they're concerned or anything like that. The area to the south of the pool looks like it's 8 foot wide. They're at 5-foot setback, so I mean, if that were reduced to 3, you know, could that get you to a compliant 10? If they were in love with the 8-foot wide on the south end of the pool, is there room for the pool to possibly be shifted to the north and still comply? It's just something for the board to consider, you know, if they're particularly concerned with the setbacks, that there are alternatives where you could at least comply with one of the setbacks. The west is gonna be tough, you know, I think we typically require, or code typically requires, if they can provide 3 feet around it, you know, to shift it closer to the building, you know, you may improve it, but, you know, I don't think you're gonna get a full 10 feet along the west.
It's 4 feet as it is now. And if, if you shift that back to the house, you know, 1 foot's not gonna help you very much.
Yeah, and then also you typically pitch the concrete away from the pool, so you don't necessarily want water draining to your foundation, you know, if you have a grassed area or gravel or something where it can like infiltrate, you know, that's, that's preferred. So like I said, if the board took issue with it, there is, you know, an alternate where they could possibly reduce it or shift it, but...
Can we, can we bring the full board back? Would y'all have an issue of shifting that pool back towards the wood deck? You know, enough to at least get rid of the one setback that you, the one issue on the setback on the, I think it's the south side?
Or, or if you're absolutely needed, I think you need to put testimony on the record why the patio that you have needs to be as, you know, northwest of the pool, why that patio space needs to be as big as it is, you know, you do have the existing raised wood deck. You know, what's the plans for that area? You know, the...
The area would be seating, so we just want enough room to have seating comfortably in when falling to a pool.
Okay. So really, Mr. Chair, it's up to you guys, you know, you got the elevated deck, you do have that extended patio to the north of it, you know. Could it be shifted to make it compliant? Yes, but, I mean, it's really up to you guys what you think.
But Charlie, then you take away other usable space, right?
That's, that's true.
It's a small footprint, you know, turns my stomach when we have to get these applicants in front of us. Because of the damage we've done in years past, the way we go ahead, and our planning board and our zoning board has approved certain, you know, developments. And it just, it leaves us with this. We're mopping up here.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the...
Yes, sir.
Behind the pool, is that gonna be like that 5-foot area, is that gonna be like a planting bed? It's not gonna be grass back there?
No, currently we have just like plants and stone, like a stone little planting area, that's what they're...
It's not a big issue for me, I just was curious what was back there. You're not gonna put grass back there?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, I agree with Mr. Sayah. I think, you know, they're doing a lot to improve it, so I think we can deal with that one foot.
Okay.
So, and then, Mr. Chair, just two more questions for the applicant. So the fence that's there, is that existing and does it completely enclose the rear? So you're not proposing any new fence?
No, no fence.
Is it all your fence on your property too?
It, it is.
Okay, and then the pool equipment's just going right on the south side of the, of the dwelling, right?
Correct.
I just wanna put it on the record, so we have a lot of issues when like contractors go and install things and then they move it after the fact. Just make sure they're aware, there's a 10-foot setback requirement. I don't want to see you guys having to come back to the board for a small, you know, little thing with the pool equipment, so, just to get it on the record. And then, Mr. Chair, the last thing that I have is, obviously with the other application, they show construction access on their plan. Any damaged curb and sidewalks gotta get replaced, you know, shouldn't get damaged, but... Other than that, and then the, them, you know, providing an actual sign and seal plan as a condition of approval and then also for their permits, you know, refining the grading in the side and the rear yard, making sure it all gets to Deborah, Deborah Lane. I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Ball?
Um, I think the proposal is certainly an improvement over the existing conditions. I think the reduction in the impervious coverage is certainly a benefit to the property and the community as a whole. While they, you know, do need the setback variances, I think the application makes sense.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hughes?
I know, Mr. Chair, just to kind of echo Vice Chairman Sayah and Secretary Martin said about the existing plan. I have no issues and I don't see a need to really, like what Charlie was talking about, about shifting things. I think existing, it looks pretty good and I have no further questions on that.
Mr. Cantor?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Rusko?
Okay, no problem.
Mr. Stanton?
Oh, sir, I'm good.
Mr. Sayah?
I'm good, sir.
Mr. and Ms. Martinez, do y'all understand everything that has been said or do y'all have any questions?
No questions, we understand.
Mr. Tropoli, you pretty, pretty much in line now?
Yes, Mr. Chair, no problems on my end.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna request vote to open to public.
Hughes making a motion to open to public?
Sayah seconds?
Seconded by Mr. Sayah, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Eileen, if questions or comments from the public?
Okay, the chairman has opened up this hearing for questions and comments on this application. Any member of the public who has a question or would like to comment, please use the raise your hand feature and we'll bring you into the meeting one at a time.
Eileen, I'm noticing someone with a phone there, maybe the instructions on how to raise their hand in case that person, I'm just trying to be thorough.
I'm not seeing anyone, but if anyone has any questions or comments and wants to be brought into the hearing, use the raise your hand feature. If you're on the telephone, you have to press star nine to be brought into the meeting or to raise your hand, rather.
Thank you for that, thank you.
Yeah, I looked that up last week. And I have no one raising their hand.
Okay, can I have a motion to close public?
Make a motion to close, Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Sayah. Can I have a second?
Second, Mr. Cantor.
Seconded by Mr. Cantor, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Charlie, do you have any further?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Christine?
Nothing further.
Okay, any, any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Mr. Martinez, Ms. Martinez, would y'all like to have a closing statement here or?
We'd just like to say we appreciate your time and consideration and your help as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board in this application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sayah.
Considering all that's been put on the record and the fact that the impervious surface is improving on this particular site, you know, that the homeowners who are fine residents of this township and good taxpaying citizens, I'd like to see them have an in-ground pool, therefore I make a motion to approve this application, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sayah. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna second, I echo Mr. Sayah's comments. They are making a considerable improvement. Mr. Martinez may have a little more grass to mow, but I think that's a trade-off for having a pool. So with the finding of facts from Charlie, I have no issues with it and I will second the application.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Mertens, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Mr. Chairman, I too agree with the thought that they're removing some of that concrete and putting something green over there. I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
Yes, I'd just like to also add on to what everybody else has been saying about, you know, getting Charlie the proper elevations, you know, that he requires and the improvement in the walkway setback too also. I'd just like to make a note that that's a wonderful thing and I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Rusko?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, enjoy your swimming pool.
Thank you much, you're welcome.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes, I would like to reiterate everything that the board members have said, but I also want to add, you know, we've had pool cases come in after the fact to where these issues are built in into the setbacks, you know, and no prior approvals. I appreciate you taking the time and going through this before you built your pool. So you could give us a chance to look it over, look at the conditions instead of coming in after the fact and then you're 5-foot into the setback. It makes it awful difficult for the board, you know, to grant relief that way because we didn't know what the prior existing conditions were at the time. So it makes it very easy for us to sit back and say, okay, you know, you're not, you're, the house next door to you, that was one of the reasons I asked what was behind you. The elevation from your house to their property, you know, I really don't have those elevations, but I don't think it changes that much there. We've had cases come in where they wanted to put a pool in and the house next door was 25 feet off of the property line, but it was also 15 foot up higher than where they wanted to put the pool. So those issues, you know, the board is actually able to look at and, you know, determine the amount of impervious coverage you're taking out is considerable to what you have existing. You know, and so, yeah, my vote is yes, definitely on this. So good luck and enjoy your pool.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, at this time, the board is gonna take a five-minute recess.
Be back at 8:25.
Yes, ma'am.
The board's gonna take a recess, and they will be back in session at eight twenty-five. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Okay, wait till everybody pops up here.
Yeah, we'll give them a minute.
Yep.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Where do I get a picture that looks like a garage of a working man, like you have?
Take a, take a, uh, whatever you call a screenshot.
Are we officially back?
Well, you see the PVC over to the right, that's all of my seedlings.
Oh, okay.
Over there, that, that's my little indoor greenhouse.
Oh, wow. You have a lot going.
Eileen, at the end of the meeting, um, I wanted to ask you something about the, um, upcoming classes, if we can try to remember, please.
What do you wanna know about them?
Are we gonna be taking them this year?
They're only mandatory sessions this year, so nobody goes except the new members. I think Mr. Stanton already went. So, that's it. You don't have to, oh, you're off the hook.
Well, I was online, so it would've been fine, but okay, I'm gonna double-check. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, can you tell Todd to unmute him?
Mr. Sayah? Charlie, Mr. Roscoe?
Mr. Cohen, who else do you need brought into the meeting? Yeah.
Eileen, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'm, I'm off video now, I'm trying to get back on.
You're on video, I can see you and hear you.
I can't, I can only see you.
Well, you don't need to see anybody else.
Um, I need Allison, I need Narin Boudichev, and I need Gary Chang.
Okay, we have them all, then.
But I can't see anybody, I don't know what's going on.
Do you have it on speaker view, Todd? Can you see me now that I'm talking?
I do.
Okay.
What do I do with, how do I get out of there?
Upper right-hand corner?
Yeah.
Of your screen?
And change it to gallery view.
Um, not finding any of these things.
Top right-hand corner.
Yeah, I see you ones on, you're in my top right-hand corner.
Oh, you, you can't miss me.
Top video, mute my video, hide video.
You just have to move your, Todd, you have to move your cursor, so you'll see the little view button up in the top right?
Uh, I'm gonna have to bring in my IT person, as well as my wife. Eileen, I need you one second, please. I've, I've announced you to the meeting, so it's okay.
Mr. Troply, you need to swear her in.
They're telling me I gotta, I gotta give... Eileen, what do I have to do?
Upper right-hand corner, the view button, you have to change it to gallery view?
Doesn't, it says minimize view, stop video, mute, and hide video, show video. I can't get gallery, I don't know where it is. They said upper right.
He might be on a Mac, maybe that's why it's different.
No, it's not on a Mac.
Yeah, I'm on a Mac, it's in the same place.
Oh.
I just had it, I apologize.
Maybe right-click in the black, Todd, and maybe it'll give you a...
How about if we go out and come back and just come back in?
I don't wanna do that whole thing.
Well, we may have to.
You might wanna move your mouse.
We, we are.
Um, what's it called?
Gallery view?
I have, oh, there I go, there we go. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Good evening, sorry about that.
That's okay. Next case before the board, case number BA twenty-one twenty-one, Rashid Gimpel Ling Inc. Conditional use variance minor site plan with bulk variances. Application of Rashid Gimpel Ling Inc., I hope I said that right, Todd. Uh, applicant and owner seeking conditional use variance minor site plan approval with bulk variance relief to construct a forty-foot diameter yurt at the center of the site and extend the concrete walkway to and around the yurt on premises known as block one twenty-four, lots six, seven, eight, and eighteen. Forty-three East Fifth Street, expiration date June ninth twenty twenty-one. Mr. Cohen?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Todd Cohen, I represent the applicant. Um, the property is currently developed as the Rashid Gimpel Ling Buddhist Temple. Uh, consists of a one-story house of worship, two dwellings for resident monks, and a detached garage. It also has a paper wheel building, a prayer wheel building, located next to the temple. The applicant is proposing to construct a forty-foot diameter yurt at the center of the site. That unfortunately requires a D-three use variance, as the property does not meet the conditional use standards for a house of worship. There's also some associated bulk variances with the application that are also required. I have with me this evening Gary Chang from Geller and Siv. He is gonna be testifying as a general engineer this evening. I have Narin Baddishov, who is a representative of the applicant. He's a congregant member for quite some time, and will be explaining, um, the brief history of the temple, and describe the activities on-site, and the cultural significance of the yurt. And then we have Allison Coffin, who you're all familiar with, our planner, who will be addressing the justification for the variances. So, I would need all three of my witnesses sworn, and then we... ...testimony, and then we'll move to the applicant.
Very good, Mr. Cohen. Um, would, uh, all of the witnesses, please unmute and, uh, raise your right hand. I think we were waiting for an hour, okay. Do you swear the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help you God?
I do, yes.
Okay, and would each of you please state your name, starting with Allison?
Allison Coffin, C.O.F.F.I.N., professional planner.
Thank you, and Gary, please?
Gary Chang, C.H.I.A.N.G., professional engineer.
And Mr. Baddishov, please. Um, not hearing him, Todd.
Narin, you're apparently muted?
No, he's not, he's not muted.
On your computer, you may have to hit the volume switch.
Narin, test one, two, three. Can, can, can't hear you.
This is not good, 'cause he's my main witness.
I know in the past, people have had to sign off and sign back on, I don't know.
Sometimes you need a headset, 'cause the microphone on the computer isn't connecting.
There's a function to test the microphone.
It's got a lot of IT stuff, dude.
How's that?
That's better.
Got you.
Perfect. Little technical difficulties. Narin Baddishov, B.A.D., U.S. HOV.
Okay, all sworn, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna start with Gary, who's gonna give a, um, some testimony on the property itself. Gary, would you please put your, um, professional and educational qualifications as an engineer on the record?
Yes, um, I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. Graduated from NGIT, and, um, been a professional engineer for over twenty years. And I have, um, testified in Middlesex among the county boards.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gary, if you could, um, briefly describe the site, concentrating on basically where the site is, what's on the site, the size of the buildings, and the, the, uh, proposal, where the yurt's proposed to be located?
Sure, sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Um, the property is located on the northerly side of East Fifth Street, and the southerly side of the East Fourth Street. And it's in, uh, block one twenty-four, lots six, seven, eight, and eighteen. The property is in the R fifty residential zone district, and is currently developed with a one-story house of worship building, a two-story dwelling, a one-story garage, and a stone parking area. The existing house of worship is accessed by a paved driveway from East Fifth Street. And the applicant is proposing to construct a one thousand two hundred and fifty-six square feet yurt behind the existing house of worship. And they're gonna extend the existing concrete walkway to the proposed yurt. Um, there will not be any kind of, um, water or sewer connection into the yurt, only electric. And the yurt is located pretty much in the center of the site, at the high, highest elevation.
Okay, is that a, a height, the height, the elevation, is that existing, or you're gonna have to bring in Phil for that?
Uh, we don't, we don't have to bring in Phil.
You, you have the existing elevation there?
Yes.
Now, is there any existing trees there?
There, there are existing trees. Um, some of it has already been removed, which, uh, I'm gonna have Mr. Um, Baddishov testify to that.
Okay, I'm gonna bring Sherry in.
Gary, just to clarify for the board, there is some amount of fill in the immediate vicinity of the yurt. The property does slope to East Fourth Street, so to, to provide a level pad for the yurt, there is gonna be some amount of fill in the center.
Yes.
And then slope down to existing grade, right?
Right, mm-hmm. The drainage patterns kinda pretty much remain the same, draining down to, uh, East Fourth Street.
Yeah, but they, they, I'm looking at, I can't really see the elevations here from, from the drawing that I have, but it looks like it's got a considerable amount of slope there.
So, Mr. Chair, the proposed first floor of the yurt is one thirty-point-five. The existing grade around the center of that, obviously the property slopes is in the one, one twenty-nine to one twenty-seven, so at the, the northwest side of it, you know, you're gonna have about two and a half feet of fill, just to get a level pad for the yurt. And then it's, Gary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's just a general three-to-one slope, plus or minus, down to grade?
Yes.
And that's just grating, so you can have a level pad to install the yurt?
Level pad, and also less disturbance around, around the yurt.
Right, okay.
Um, Wendell, you wanted me to...
Yeah, on, on the trees.
Yeah, so I was at the site today, uh, just to take a look, I wanted to see if there was, um, you know, uh, maybe an area that we might wanna shift it to, to save a tree or two, if there was nice ones in the way. And, um, pretty much the entire site is cleared. There is, um, one random tree left in the middle that looks like it just hasn't been removed yet.
Okay.
So, it doesn't reflect, um, you know, what they propose, just by carving out that circle.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I, it, the way I'm looking at it, it looks like it was wooded at one time.
Well, the applicant's gonna address that during his testimony.
Okay. Okay.
In fact, if there's no other questions of Gary at this moment, we could move on, so we can get the history of the site and what's proposed for the...
So, the only questions I have are Gary, um, you know, did you look at historic aerials? Most of the improvements on-site have existed from some time, at least since early two thousands, if not earlier. At least all the structures, and then the driveway, the parking area, that's all been in existence for a considerable amount of time, correct?
Yes.
And then, just to clarify, too, so, there's two dwellings on the property, right? So, there's the one immediately to the north of the house of worship, and then there's a second one that fronts on East Fourth Street. That's, that's a second parsonage, that, that's correct?
Uh, one is the garage, and then the one on East Fourth Street is the dwelling.
Yeah, so there's, there's two dwellings on the property, right?
That's correct. The applicant's also gonna testify to exactly what goes on in each, each building.
No, that's fine, Todd, I just wanna make sure it was clear for the board.
As, as far as stormwater, eh, the water runoff of the yurt, the proposed yurt, how is that gonna be handled?
Well, right now, it's just going to sheet flow down at East Fourth Street. On the, the grade is, I mean, it's not going to, um, it's not going to the neighbor's lots, so it's sheet flowing. It's gonna continue the way it is down there. That's how we're proposing it right now.
Charlie?
So, uh, Mr. Chair, it's, it's not a major development, it's not a quarter acre new impervious or an acre of disturbance, so there's, you know, no mandated stormwater management. For structures like this, you know, sometimes we require drywells. Uh, I don't know how you install a roof, I'm not familiar with the yurt, it's a round structure, I don't know how you put, uh, you know, roof leaders and, and collect that. Could they potentially do some kind of stone trench, maybe around the perimeter of it, you know, some thickness to let water drain into it? If you're particularly concerned about runoff, that's a possibility. Having said it, having said that, this is in the R fifty zone, there are no impervious coverage restrictions in the zone.
Okay. Okay.
Chairman, if, if we can, then we can move on to Narin's testimony?
Yes.
Okay, Narin, obviously you've been previously sworn. Would you explain for the board your affiliation with the temple?
I am a, uh, long, longtime member and the lead on this project.
Okay. In fact, when we discussed it, you've been a member for about fifty-three years, is that correct?
Yes, my entire life.
You've been authorized by the board to testify on their behalf this evening?
Yes.
Could you give a brief history, um, of the temple and the site, so the board gets a feel for how long they've been there, and...
Sure.
And what goes on, and then we'll go on to the individual house of worship.
All right, again, my name is Narin Baddishov, and I would like to briefly share some background information on the origins of the organization and the community, whose application is before you tonight, and say a few words about the proposed design of the future temple annex. Our story begins in early nineteen fifty-one, when the US Border Immigration Appeals quietly upended the legal notion of what constituted a European person. Under US immigration law, and, uh, that cleared away the last hurdle preventing America's first ethnic Mongolian immigrants from settling here as refugees from the Soviet communism. That obscure ruling declared that the unmistakably Asian Kamak Mongols, formerly of Russia, uh, and the Soviet human that lies within Europe, should be considered members of the European race, and thus be eligible for American permanent residency. The original six hundred benefactors of that generous ruling had spent the preceding six years in series of German displaced persons camps, housing numerous refugees uprooted by World War Two. During that period, they had narrowly escaped forcible rep- repatriation to USSR, a country that was engaged in a genocidal population transfer of Kamak Mongol tribesmen and women from the native Russian steppes, the most inhospitable zones of the Soviet Far East. Prior to those mass deportations, the introduction of Bolshevism in the Kamak Mongol Autonomous Republic of Russia during the decade of the nineteen thirties destroyed much of the cultural, economic, and political underpinnings of the Kamak Mongol traditional nomadic pastoralism. Nowhere was the dissociation more pronounced than in the spiritual lives of these first victims of Joseph Stalin, his hatred of religion and his infrastructure. Thus, a religious and spiritual tradition that the Kamak Mongols had brought with them to the Volga Basin from their western Mongolian homeland more than three hundred years earlier, was brutally eradicated in the blink of an eye. Therefore, when those first Kamak Mongols made their way to Freewood Acres to join an expanding refugee community of fellow non-Kamak Russians expats there, the most urgent priority for them was to establish a communal worship center, to once again practice their faith openly, to pass the faith on to their children, and to house a group of clergyman who had followed their parishioners out of Russia during the fog of war. The congregation soon remodeled an existing two-car garage on the plot of land they purchased on November twenty-third, nineteen fifty-two. Less than a year after arriving in New Jersey, the Kamaks of Freewood Acres consecrated Rashid Gimpel Ling's original temple, and established the first Tibetan Buddhist worship center in America. The rest, as they say, is history. Emeritus Professor Jeffrey Hopkins, Hopkins of the University of Virginia, America's leading scholar of Tibetan Buddhism, had observed, quote, "The growth of Tibetan Buddhism in the United States could not have been, occurred the way it did without the contributions of a little old band of stateless immigrants whose remarkable odyssey spans four centuries and half the globe," unquote. In nineteen seventy, in nineteen seventy, the current temple was built, following shortly thereafter by a modest rectory and a structure housing a communal prayer wheel. Their current plans for the construction of a temple annex represents a renewed commitment to maintaining and advancing the religious and cultural heritage so doggedly preserved for us by our parents and grandparents, and to add that, to add to that legacy both materially and spiritually for the benefit of our community and future generations. In closing, the temple annex project that has been described as a yurt, which is a word derived from the Turkish language... In closing, the Temple Annex Project that has been described as a yurt, which is a word derived from the Turkish language. What in Mongolian it means, uh, or the equivalent is ger. G E R, which means home. And is the overwhelming reason why we chose the design of the quintessential nomadic dwelling. As our temple annex for Rushi Gempaling and his membership. The center of the enclosed space traditionally reserved for the hearth. Will contain a modest exhibition recounting the Kamak's remarkable odyssey. Before finding our incomparable American home nearly seventy years ago. Thank you for your time and attention.
Narin, thank you very much for that um, brief history lesson. I'd like to now concentrate on the specific uses on the site and um. And like basically when the house of worship is used and stuff like that, so let's, let's start with the house of worship. Um, in, in our discussion, you told me that it's mainly used for four holiday services a year. And then also for funerals and weddings, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what is, what is the maximum size of the congregation that attends these events?
Approximately forty people.
Okay, and most of them are local?
Most of them are local, yes.
In fact, most of them walk to the site, is that correct? Okay. And the parking lot, what's the status of that? Is it ever filled during these uh? The holiday, high holidays or anything?
Rarely.
Okay. Um, so you wouldn't see a need for additional parking if the yurt was constructed, is that correct?
No, that's correct.
Um, the two-story dwelling that's located behind the house of worship. That's used, and the other, the other dwelling that's on the site. They're all, they're used to um, for the residents of the various monks, is that correct?
Yes.
And you've explained to me that there's four to six monks at any one time on, on, I guess, on rotation?
Yes.
And they reside in the house and, and the houses and conduct the services related to the house of worship, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, and the prayer wheelhouse, could you explain what that's all about?
Uh, the prayer house is a wheel that um. Inside the, it's probably a three or no, two-foot diameter wheel, which spokes around it. And inside the wheel is a thousand prayers. So in essence, every time you spin around the wheel, you say those thousand prayers for good fortune.
So the only thing that goes on in that building is the spinning of the wheel on, on, on holiday occasions, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the other building on site is a detached garage, could you explain what's in there and what that's used for?
Uh, basically used for storage.
Okay. Uh, landscaping equipment, snow blowers, things like that, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I think you've already described basically the cultural significance of the yurt. Um, you explain what the yurt would be used for.
Uh, basically after services for, as you're ex, uh, or as I've heard before, tea and crumpets.
Cookies?
Cookies.
Okay, and, and what kind, what, how, what do you set up in there? Is there gonna be? Folding chairs, tables, what, what goes on?
Uh, most of the time will be open, but for the elderly, uh, we would have folding chairs.
Okay. Um, and again, the yurt's only gonna be used on limited occasions during the year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, there were some comments in the engineer's letter that I'm gonna address with you, so the board can. Find out what our answers to some of them are. Um, the board had asked us if we consider um, consolidating lots six, seven, eight, and eighteen. Cuz the site does function as one lot pretty much. Uh, we discussed that, and I believe the temple has no objection to those four lots being consolidated into one, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And trash removal on site, how is that handled now?
Um. Curbside.
Okay.
We take it from the, from the residence and. Take it to the curbside.
Okay, and you don't anticipate a need for any change in that situation, or to provide any trash removal location on site?
No.
Um. Board, did um, board engineer mention that the possibility of adding a handicap parking spot um. In the location of the existing spots, would you have an objection to that?
No.
Okay. Um. There was um, a comment regarding uh, possible deed restriction for the. Houses that are used as parsonage. Um. Uh, we, our brief discussion, I, I think it was the temple's position that it didn't want to add a deed restriction if it didn't have to. But the history of those two houses, that they've always been used to house the monks, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're gonna continue to do so, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Todd, just to clarify that, there's no intent at some point in the future that. The one that fronts on East Fourth Street rent that out to some separate tenant, unassociated with the, the house of worship use?
No, that's, that's, the intent is for that to always be with the temple, but getting to the next point was Lot Nineteen. That is a possibility of down the road, that could be rented out, although presently, it houses former monks and a nun. Um, but uh. Narin, correct me if I'm wrong, but the temple would rather not um, consolidate Lot Nineteen, that could be a. A future asset of the temple that they'd like to hold on to and maintain the use as it is today, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, what about water and sewer? I think you're in the process of uh, connecting your public water and public sewer?
Yes, I believe we have um, approved permits for water and sewer.
Okay, um, and there was a question about how many connections were approved for the uh. That said, I believe you said there were two?
Two, one for water, one for sewer.
Oh, okay, but all three of the buildings. Will be connected, the two houses and the temple will be connected to water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay, but there is no proposal to connect the yurt to water and sewer, is that correct?
Correct.
But there is a proposal where you'd like to run electric to the yurt?
Yes.
Okay. Uh. Briefly, um, we discussed the trees. Um, there's been some clearing in the last year, could you explain to the board what, what was going on with that, so Sherry can understand what she saw to that?
Um, last year, there was a uh, thunderstorm. Which a lightning strike had. Hit one of the trees, um, there was uh, the branch fell, and a brick, big burn mark was there. And it was decided that since, at the time, the whole lot was overgrown with, with brush, layers of leaves. Dead trees, a lot of widowmaker trees, leaning trees. Um, fallen trees, we decided to clean it up.
Okay. Um, was the township involved in any way?
Initially, no.
No, but I mean, the township eventually got in touch with you, and I corrected?
Yes, 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 yes.
Explain what happened with that.
Uh, we had a court official uh, come. Um, he had mentioned that we were supposed to get a permit. Uh, we went to get the permit, or file the permit, but then the following day. The court official had said that we weren't uh, we wouldn't need a permit because it's less than an acre property.
Okay, and that was, I guess, Lot Eighteen that it was referring to, where most of the trees are, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, did you um, did you have an application in at that time?
No, I believe they got a notice of violation, Sherry, and that's what prompted them to. Uh, make the application, and then they were told they didn't need the application.
Matt?
Yeah, I'm trying to look up the property now, uh, I wasn't aware of any tree clearing, cuz uh, that was done by my, uh. It was looked into by my code enforcement staff. Uh, chances are, when we looked at the site, I'm guessing this is on Lot Eighteen where there's only a residential structure, correct?
Correct, and Lot Eighteen is forty by forty, which is less than an acre.
Right, technically that is exempt from uh, tree clearing, however, if it's a subject of a board application. Or somewhat, you know, with this pending where we're doing a lot consolidation, um, I can't necessarily blame my code enforcement officer for not knowing that, but. Uh, that would have changed things, for sure.
Charlie?
Any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, Todd, just to clarify further, so um, with the yurt, like you said, it's just for after a traditional service. You go in there and you have like tea and cookies and stuff like that, there's no, like, you can't have side-by-side services in both buildings. Or there's no intent to have like a service in both buildings at the same time, is that correct?
Yes.
And then as far as the site as a whole, um, do you have any like, you know, Sunday school or Saturday's school kind of activities for kids? Um, or anything like that?
No.
No, okay, and then there's no like, classes or teaching or anything, this is just strictly for house of worship? And then the houses are just for the residents of the monks, there's no like, students or anything associated with. With the, the church operations, right?
No.
Okay. That is all I have for the applicant, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Sherry, do, do you have?
Well, I, I'm, so I understand that, you know, they weren't required a permit beforehand, so I. You know, I don't know with Matt, if you, how that would work, since they were told they don't need a permit. Um. Before this process, I, I mean, I looked at the stumps, the site has been being, has been cleared over time. Um, it looks like they've been taking the trees out slowly, so I don't know if we're gonna just go with like, they were all hazard trees. Cuz it doesn't appear like that. Um, there's some big, you know, oaks that were taken out um, up towards the building. The site by Fourth Street is definitely not as nice down at that end as um, heading up towards the temple. Um, I mean, I would like to see some additional trees put back, the site looks like a mess right now. And also, what's the plans for the ground cover, you know, the plans right now um, show it's all wooded. You can't just leave it how it is.
We plan to make improvements in that uh, trees.
Right, but you've opened up the entire uh, property um, that used to have shade, you know, so now you're gonna get. Whatever, you know, invasive vines and, you know, poison ivy and greenbrier and all sorts of things growing there now that you opened up the site. So you need to do something to the site, you know, I, I'm assuming you're gonna take all those stumps out.
Sure.
Um, they're trip hazards right now, cuz they're not flush cut, you got trees that are about. Maybe a foot to two feet tall all over the site.
Yeah, we plan on removing the stumps, replanting trees, and uh. Uh, vegetation.
Todd?
What's that mean exactly? Are we talking about seed cover, or, you know, perennials, or are you making it all lawn?
Well, some lawn, but a lot of trees, I mean, um, we don't have a plan yet to actually where they're gonna go, but. The overall plan is to, to re- replant trees there.
Todd, do you have an objection to working with Sherry on the landscape plan there?
Um, I never have an objection to working with Sherry, um. It's just that um. There's a very limited budget for the type of things that we need to talk about with the temple, being, you know, such a small organization and. That type of stuff, um, we could definitely work towards some type of a plan, I'm sure Narin has something in mind. Uh, we haven't had a lengthy discussion, I don't wanna speak for the temple necessarily. But yeah, obviously, if, we, we need to work something out if Sherry's not real happy with the way the site is.
If, if you work it out, you can work it out over a time period, you know, it, you know, but it, something's gotta have. Something's gonna have to happen here, you know? Can't leave it as it is.
Right, you can't care for the property, yes, it is.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and, and Todd, you know, the applicant's asking for relief from a Woodlands Management Plan, you know, I think what's presented on the plan, it's. A modest clearing in the immediate vicinity of the yurt, but what's actually been cleared out there is pretty substantial, you know, beyond that. And towards East Fourth Street, so, um, you know, I, I think I. There needs to be a little bit more clarification and detail for Sherry, just cuz it is a pretty substantial area, it's not just a small. Right around the yurt that's been cleared.
Well, would the board be amenable to a condition of approval that we will submit? Um, a plan to reestablish what they're gonna do with taking out the stumps, what trees they're gonna replant. And what vegetation they'll replant. And what, over what time?
Charlie, you have a problem with that?
I, I mean, really, it comes down to like, relief from the Woodlands Management Plan, I mean, there's certain restrictions on, you know. Uh, uh, point one acre plot and doing tree replacements and things like that. I mean, is the board like, considering waiving all the requirements or significant requirements of that ordinance section? Or, I, I, you know, I, I just don't wanna leave Sherry hanging with a lot, you know, hang, holding the bag to make the determination on like. A big significant component of like, what's the, what's to go on with that, that area?
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sayah.
So uh, so Sherry, I thought our ordinance permits anything under an acre. You know, to be at the homeowner or the property owner's discretion on, on tree removal. I thought we really only get involved on lots that are greater than an acre.
It's, and if it's before the board, any, any application that's before the board, you're referring to like a residential property.
Yeah, so the homestead provision in the ordinance, Mr. Chair, if you have a lot under one acre, you're allowed to clear less. If the lot area is less than an acre without a permit, Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Right, and, and the issue here is that it seems like the clearing took place after the application was made, and.
Oh, no, I don't think that's the case at all, Matt.
When was the clearing?
I think the clearing took place before the application was made.
When, when did it come in?
Narin.
Application?
Yeah, the question came in a few months ago, when was the clearing done, most of the clearing?
Well, last year.
And recent, there's definitely sawdust and whatnot out there. It sounded like it was being done over time, starting from last year and continuing. I spoke to some of the neighbors also in the area, um, you know, who said it's just a continuing process.
The application came in in November of twenty twenty.
You're saying the storm prior to that, uh.
There's definitely an argument to be made that if the clearing was done before an application was made, especially in the township size. It's still a residential lot of one acre or less, any clearing that was done after the application was made, when the intention was to consolidate the lots and kind of. Put this as one central site for this non-residential use, uh, you know, mixed use, we'll call it. Then there should have been Woodlands Management considerations, that clearing.
Okay. Okay. I, I don't know how we're gonna handle this, uh. I think we need a landscape plan for number one, uh, you know, going forward. By having that landscape plan, you know, it, it, it doesn't all have to go at once, but you know, there, there. It's gonna have to be some timeframe, you know, s- established on, on revegetation there. I feel, you know, uh.
I don't think the applicant would necessarily disagree or have a problem with that.
Okay.
Um, I, I'd rather make it a condition of approval that we satisfy Sherry. Than we have to come back and show the board another plan and all that stuff.
I would just need some parameters, I think, what's the board expecting? You know, to come back on site, I, I mean, I certainly, as it was submitted, I think a waiver to the management plan was. Um, you know, reasonable, since it was a smaller clearing, um, but as it stands now, I, I mean. Even if we're gonna require replacement, I, I think the board has to make some sort of decision on, on how much we're gonna look to replace.
Chairman?
Yes.
Are there any legal requirements for replacement in this situation, or of course, guidelines for replacement?
Well, so ju- so, eh, the size of the lot doesn't matter, so in the ordinance, if an application is before the board. Um, then they have to do a Woodlands Management Plan, it doesn't matter on the size. Um, you know, so of course, if you do a survey, you know, you can come up with information based on what it looks like. I don't need, it's not, it's not a, there's no need to survey the property, um, I don't think they would, uh. They'd probably hit that max contribution rate, so it would really just be the size of the clearing times that thirty-five thousand dollars per acre. Which then could be um, put into, you know, a quantity of trees.
Either dead or lawn.
Are you looking for a tree contribution?
No, 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 no.
No, I'd like to see plantings, um, but I'm saying that's how it's quickly calculated, it's thirty-five thousand dollars per acre of clearing. And then you can do planting at three hundred dollars per tree, that would get deducted off of that quantity, off to, off of that dollar amount.
And the difference would go to the township?
Where you provide the entirety of it, and you don't need to make contribution?
Yeah, if you can plant it all on site, that's how it would work, or if you plant half on site, you know, that's how all applications would work.
Mr. Chair, I'm just curious, is there any way, I might be grasping at straws, but, to, uh, pull up any imagery of like November, uh, when the application was made to see how much, was there? I don't even know if there's like satellite imagery like that.
There's Google Street View.
Yeah, but that's, we don't know when that was, do we? Can we pull?
Yeah, it's marked on there. It's marked on, on Street View.
But can we pull it up from November of twenty twenty, or is it just gonna be whatever they give us?
We don't have, uh, aerial imagery to that specific.
No.
That's what I figured. Okay, thank you.
Trying to get some in town, but not yet.
I, I think we're gonna have to come up with, with some sort of a, a landscape plan. You know, on, on replanting the, the site. Honestly, I don't think it's gonna be that much, because it, like I say, it's.
It's a small area.
Yeah, it's a very small area. I think i- it could be satisfied very easily.
Any applicant, I think, has agreed to that type of a condition.
Okay. Do you have a problem with that, Sherry?
No, that's fine. Are, also, are you looking to do any additional removals? Because there were still a few stragglers out there.
No.
So, I also don't recommend keeping what you've kept. You have a large silver maple in the center of the site that is not in good shape. Um, and it looks to me like it's, was supposed to be taken down. I just thought they couldn't handle that removal.
Well, well, most of the trees on our site were, were like that, and we just left a big one there. It's too little bit too big for us to, to handle.
Exactly, right. Most of them were single lead trees, which would have been a better option to save than the multi-stem, dying silver maple.
If they needed you before this, fair enough.
Yeah, indiscriminate clearing.
But legally, though.
Yeah.
Not, maybe.
Mr. Chairman, um, I did look at the site today. Um, I agree with Sherry. I mean, it really needs to get a little bit of a facelip, these trees taken out, but I, I, I think we can work with the applicant. It's not like a major, development or anything, and I think in this situation, I think, we can be a little bit, give them a little leeway with the timeframe, but I do agree that it does need a little bit of facelip. Yeah, okay. Charlie, you got any more questions?
This is just a general question for Sherry and, and just with the, so the, the tree clearing, clearing calculation, and obviously there's a, cost per acre, and then you gotta pr- provide replacement trees. Is, is waiving a partial waiver of like the fee, is that something the board can require? Or is that something that only the governing body can r- can do because it's a municipal fee?
The replacement requirement fee, that one?
Yeah.
Um.
I do not think that the board has the ability to.
Yeah, I don't think they do.
Tropoli.
On your board.
Mr. Tropoli, can you?
Oh, I can hear, yeah, I heard it's the, uh, no, I don't, I agree with Matt that, you know, the board, uh, doesn't have the jurisdiction to waive any fees.
Okay. So, I, I would strongly suggest, Mr. Cohen.
Well, let's, let's, let's revisit this a minute. Are we talking about the fees generated by the Woodlands Management Plan? Or the tree replacement ordinance?
One and the same.
Can we, can, can we waive? Can we waive the tree rep- the, where am I going with this?
Woodlands Management.
Woodlands Management. In this particular case, because of the congregation with their condition that they're gonna satisfy Sherry, with regard to the replantings, and we'll get, some guidance, I guess we'll get Gary involved or something, we'll submit a plan, but, um.
That, Mr. Tropoli or Matt, you know, would?
It sounds like that's what we were kind of getting at, is, you know, instead of the fee, there's gonna be some level of replacement done to Sherry's satisfaction, and hopefully we could get some direction to Sherry, you know, as to what we're expecting.
But would that, would that mean we could waiver the Woodlands Management?
One or the other. So in the ordinance, it's either you're gonna replace the trees or you're gonna pay.
Right.
We're gonna do a replacement plan that satisfies the board.
Right.
That that is going to, uh, uh, take place of the fee.
So really, Sherry is gonna have the boots on the ground for the board, um, and if for some reason, I would think, Todd, if, uh, Sherry, and, uh, the board and pardon me, and the applicant can't agree,
Have to come back.
You may have to come back is right.
I, I think we, uh, we'll be okay with that.
Okay.
Todd, do you know the acreage of Lot eighteen?
I do. It is two hundred by two hundred. It is forty thousand square feet.
Todd, really quick, just a thought. What could really help is if the, if your client has any pictures of the work done before November twenty twenty, um, a tree count, a, a, a bill from the tree company that may be specified what was taken out. I mean, that type of stuff is invaluable right now.
Narin, you have any of that stuff?
Um.
Or was it done by congregation? I don't know. I just don't know.
Well, well, let me look.
Yeah, they, i- it's in your benefit if you do, you know.
Before twenty, not in November twenty twenty, tree was permitted, so I think.
It'd be more in your benefit if you could do that.
Okay.
So why don't we, we can all think about this while Allison's, uh, gonna testify? And then we can figure out a best way to word that, maybe.
Can I, can I just ask one more question?
She's fit to go forward.
Yeah, Matt?
Well, I, I might have missed it before. The, the use of the structure on Lot eighteen, uh, what is that being used for?
Uh, that houses the rotating, um, monks for the, um, temple.
Okay, so it's associated with the church and it's a parsonage?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've done research for the board's clarification. I've done significant research into residential uses on houses of worship. Uh, the township has a history and a precedent of creating, of treating those as accessory uses, so just wanted to clarify that.
I just have a couple of quick questions also. Um, I know you said that electricity will be provided to the yurt. Do you intend to heat it, um, so it can be used year, year round, or will it just be used in warmer months?
No.
Uh, yeah, we plan to heat it, yes.
Okay, um, and then my only other question at this time is, um, is, uh, emergency, are emergency vehicles able to access the yurt? I'm looking at the site plan, it looks like, I'm not sure if they are, do you know? Okay.
And the fire department had no objection. I know we did get a report from them. Uh, Fire Bureau did not have an objection to the placement of the yurt.
So, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, there's a numerous, uh, you know, a number of waivers and variances that are cited in my review letter dated January eighth, twenty twenty-one. I'll note that the bulk of those are all, existing conditions, the structures that are, are out there. You've heard Mr. Narin say have been on the site since at least the, uh, I believe it was the, sixties or seventies, sorry, the temple was built in nineteen seventy, so they've been there for a considerable amount of time, so, what really triggers the relief is they're consolidating the lot with the use. Um, so a lot of those are just technical variances and waivers that are necessitated by the consolidation of the lot, to formalize what's effectively been going on on these lots for the past forty years. Um, and then as far as the yurt, it's located central to the structure. It's, uh, set back seventy feet from the Westerly property line, and then also ninety feet from the Eastern Hurley property line, uh, which both are compliant with the principal setback requirements in, in the zone, so, uh, really, most of the variances is just the D three, uh, because it doesn't meet all the conditions of the, uh, of the conditional use requirements. And then, you know, the various buffering and wavering setbacks that's just triggered because, these existing conditions now become proposed with the consolidation of the lot. So just to clarify that for the board, uh, before we get to the planning testimony.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay. Mr. Cohen, you wanna move forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allison, um, you've already been sworn. Would you put your qualifications on the record as a professional planner, please?
Hi, my name's Allison Coffin. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've had that license and certification since two thousand and five. In that time, I have appeared in front of this board, um, a couple of times.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Allison, I just heard Charlie's, um, rendition of, of the variances, which was very helpful. Um, could you please address the justification for the D three variance we're seeking this evening?
Sure. Um, so what we have here is, uh, use that's conditionally permitted in the zone. And there are a couple of conditions that the existing property doesn't meet, but we're not making any of those conditions worse. Uh, that includes the minimum lot area, the minimum setback from the street line, the minimum side yard, uh, the off-street parking, uh, setback, and the location, which is supposed to be on the collector or arterial road, and it's not. But all of these are existing conditions. They're measured to the existing buildings or the existing, uh, location of the property. Actually, with, respect to the minimum lot area, I guess it's not an existing condition if we're doing a lot consolidation, but we'd be improving upon it, because with that lot consolidation, we're increasing the area of the property. Not quite to five acres, but it gets up to one point eight three seven. Um, so, because we don't meet those conditions, this requires a D three variance for a conditional use. And other variance relief that would be required is from the fifty-foot buffering structures within the buffer area, which are, are pre-existing structures. Um, and the nature of the buffer area, including four-season landscaping, fencing in walls, and birmingham. So in my opinion, the special reasons exist for the granting of the requested, uh, use variance. Uh, what we have here is a use that is identified as an inherently beneficial use within the municipal land use law, which by itself satisfies the special reasons concept. However, when we're, we're looking at an inherently beneficial use, we usually use that Zika test, and that's really used to assess a D one variance for a new inherently beneficial use. It's not necessarily appropriate here, where the use is pre-existing on the site, has been there since the nineteen fifties, and is conditionally permitted in the zone. Um, so, in this case, we're not considering the introduction of a new inherently beneficial, non-permitted use, but rather a minor expansion of an existing house of worship, in a zone where such a use is conditionally permitted. So I agree with your board planner's assessment that the variance required is a D three. And given that, the New Jersey Supreme Court in the Coventry Square versus Westwood Zoning Board of Adjustment, found that when we're looking at the standard of proof for the special reasons to support a variance for a conditional use, um, that it should be relative to the nature of the deviation of the ordinance. So in essence, the Supreme Court stated that conditional uses are those which are permitted in a zone, subject to the imposition of certain specific conditions intended to control the impacts of that use. And the applicant must demonstrate that the site will accommodate the problems associated with the use, even though the proposal does not comply with the conditions. Uh, so again, this proposal doesn't meet several conditions, the lot area, the setback from street line, the minimum side yard, the off-street parking setback, and the location, which is not on a collector or arterial road. But these are all existing variances, and they would not impede the ability of the site to function with the use, despite the deviation of the ordinance requirements. In this instance, the property is already developed with a house of worship use and the associated outbuildings and housing accessory to that use. The lot size, uh, the setbacks and locations are either all existing, or in the case of the lot area are being improved. And despite the pre-existing non-conformities of this property, the proposed new year, year, or, or gear, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, can be accommodated on the site without any new relief related to the conditional use requirements. The proposed structure does not require any new variances, nor does it increase the magnitude of any existing non-conformity, which indicates that the lot can still accommodate the proposed expansion of the use, despite these pre-existing non-conformities. And this variance can be granted without detriment. Uh, all the variance conditions are pre-existing. There's no change to the variance conditions proposed, uh, other than the lot area being increased through the lot consolidation. The site has accommodated the use since nineteen fifty-two, uh, despite these variances for a very long time. The expansion will therefore not increase traffic, noise, pollution, or any other possible detriment associated with the use, as it doesn't increase the size of the congregation, and there's no detrimental impact that would result from this new structure on the property. Now, there are also variances, uh, for the, the bulk variances, and these can be granted under the C one hardship standard and without detriment. Uh, most of these variances are due to pre-existing conditions. When we look at the buffers, uh, the lot is too small to be fully functional if a full fifty-foot buffer is required, over on top of the existing conditions on the property. The imposition of such a buffer, which would require the relocation of the house of worship itself, as well as the garage and existing parking lot, would result in a severe hardship on the applicant, but such a buffer could be noted on the plans in areas that are not currently, uh, developed with structures. The proposed year itself is fully located outside of that buffer. As, as far as parking, the, but there's a existing parking deficiency on the site of a single space. This is an existing condition, and the new structure will not increase the parking demand or have any impact on this variance condition. Uh, these variances would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of your master planner zoning ordinance. The house of worship is a pre-existing use. It's appropriately located in a zone in which it is conditionally permitted. And despite the deviations from the conditions, it can be, continue to accommodate the use on the site with the addition of the new structure. And the expansion of the use to improve its function to serve its congregation, does not itself require any additional relief, and therefore does not impair the zoning plan.
Thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
Any questions of our planner?
Christine.
Um, I think, um, Ms. Coffin, uh, illustrated that, um, this application meets the criteria for D three variance relief. Um, it is an inherently beneficial use. Uh, it has been, existing on the site since the nineteen fifties, um, and the site has, accommodated the use since that time. Um, as she stated, you know, all of the conditions are pre-existing, um, with the exception of the lot area, which by consolidating, consolidating the lots, you're actually increasing the lot area.
Charlie, I just, I've got one question for you. Uh, uh, the, the drawing's very small for me to look. There is a sidewalk across the front of this, correct, on Fifth Street?
Uh, so there is sidewalk access from the house of worship to, uh, East Fifth Street. Uh, we cited in our, in our letter, obviously, the meaning of variance for curb and sidewalk along both property frontages. Um, I, I would consider that a technical relief, uh, looking at all the properties up and down both East Fifth and Fourth Street. None of them have curb and sidewalks, so that would, you know, be, um, you know, think of, at least from, you know, particularly burdensome to require the applicant to, to put that in, especially since there aren't any, curbing sidewalks adjacent to the, to the neighboring properties.
That, that's why I'm asking. They, they need relief from that, that.
Yeah, no, and then I was gonna add a couple, just clarifying, uh, just to get it on the record, so that it's, it's straightforward. So, uh, in my letter, I talked about needing a, a waiver for the number of parking spaces. Recount, uh, fourteen where thirteen are proposed, fourteen required where thirteen are proposed. As you heard, um, the applicant provide testimony, a lot of the congreg- congregates are local, and actually live in the adjacent neighborhood, so you get a lot of foot traffic that, that gets to there. Um, I take no issue with that. I think it's really de minimis, de minimis for the size of the congregation. Um, and then I just want to note about the, the architectural requirements, and I only cited it because it's a round structure. Or it says any, uh, facade that's greater than fifty foot in length. It's not typical, you see a lot of round structures. Um, uh, so I just cited it, and I, I don't take issue with it. I looked at a lot of, did a lot of research on yurts and, what they're proposing is in the characteristic of, uh, yurts that I've seen, you know, uh, on the internet from, from historical references and things like that, so, uh, a- and there is some finish to it, too, so I, I take no issue to the granting of, of that waiver, so that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Questions of the board? Mr. Hughes?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, I think I'm good so far.
Thank you. Mr. Cantor?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Oop, I just lost everybody.
That's a photo of the yurt that they're proposing.
Yep, that's. Okay, uh, Mr. Roscoe?
No questions, sir.
Mr. Sayah?
No questions, sir. I, um, you know, I, I, I remember this area well when I first moved into town. It is a good, part of town that has strong houses of worship. I know the Kossak House is probably gone by now, but there's still, you know, a strong belief in, their, their beliefs here in this, in this area, and, uh, you know, I fully support it, so. That's, I'm just listening in, sir.
Mr. Stanton?
No questions, sir.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I support, I support it, um, wholeheartedly. Go right ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Martin, any questions?
Right now, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mr. Cohen?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes our presentation.
Okay.
Um, I know we, it seemed like we had that one, you know, issue that we have to address with the landscape plan.
Yes.
With the applicant. With the applicant is definitely willing to do. I'm sure Sherry's willing to help us out. I, I was just thinking during the testimony, maybe before the resolution comes out, we can get like a minor proposal over to Sherry so she can get a look at it, so we can just, she can get comfortable, um, before we actually vote. Um, and get a, you know, a thumbs up from Sherry kind of thing. But outside of that, I, I, you know, I would ask that it be a condition of approval.
So you, are, are you requesting us not to vote tonight on this?
No, 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 no. I mean, question. On the application, um, I'm just saying before you actually.
Adopt it.
Memorialize the resolution. If, if you would like to get a better feel for, you know, that.
Gotcha.
Condition, we'll try to cooperate with you.
Okay.
I don't know that we, you know, but. Yeah, that would be fun.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna ask for a motion to open the public.
Uh, Hughes, a motion to open the public, please.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Say a second.
Seconded by Mr. Sayah. All in favor? Aye, all opposed. Okay, Eileen, we'll open for questions and comments to the, the applicants' witnesses.
Okay, at this time, for any members of the public that are listening or watching the, uh, meeting tonight, if you have any questions or comments regarding this application, please use the raise your hand feature and we'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. If you are on a phone call, remember you need to use star nine to do the raise your hand feature. We have someone here from the public. Can you please put your audio and video on? We need to be able to have audio, video.
Right, and, uh, before you begin, ma'am, I need to swear you in, so would you raise your right hand, please? You swear the testimony will give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And may we have your ni- full name and your address, please?
It's, uh, Deborah Roman Powell, and I live at fifty-seven East Fourth Street. I'm a, part of my property is across the street from, uh, where they took down all the trees. I have no, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I have no problem with the, you know, uh, the ute being put in. The problem I have is that we had a wooded lot, which I don't understand why it was taken down to the extent it was. Uh, they didn't really need to come all the way to Fourth Street to be able to put the ute in. And they definitely took out everything and not all those trees were down. I mean, but I'm not gonna quibble because you've got, uh, Sherry, I guess her name, or Sharon, who, uh, Sherry, who can see that it was a wooded lot that was taken, taken completely down, like you were building a complete building on the Fourth Street side. Um, the parking, um, I'm confused about it. I know it's used only four times a year, but there is an overflow. You have people that come in from outside and Fifth Street will have cars on it as well as Fourth Street. So there is a parking issue. Um, when they have, have their high holy days, or I'm not sure what you call them, because I'm not from the Buddhist, uh, religion. Um, I do feel they do, seeing the trees are gone, there's not much you can do when it looks like a bomb blew up uh, across the street from your house, but they do need to clean it up and they do need to make it look nice. Um, and they need to do it in a timely manner, not say in the future, because in the future, are you giving them a, a allotted time in which to do this? Um, is it in a year? Is it right after the temple is, uh, finished? You know, because you've got four or five houses over here that look right into that. As far as them being, they're very nice people. Everybody, uh, cooperates with each other. Um, I just am confused as to when will the, uh, landscaping take place? When will, uh, the trees be put back in, in a timely manner? Do you have that situated out, or is that what you're saying you're going to address at a future date? And that's my questions.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Ms. Jim. No, the intent for the plan is to be, uh, worked out with Sherry's office now as a condition of the approval. We have not really discussed, I haven't had the opportunity to discuss with my client the exact timeframes. Um, but obviously you can only plan things in certain seasons and stuff like that, but um, it's something that the temple's willing to work with for sure, as they've expressed this evening.
In a timely manner, correct?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Ms. Powell, you, you have any further?
Um, no, that was my main concern is, you know, that, that it start to look at least decent in a timely manner. I do realize construction's going on, but you've cleared a whole lot of wood that didn't need to be cleared to put up a prayer building. If the area that, from that blueprint, they went well beyond what needed to be cleared. You know, that's the only thing that I feel, you know, was done. Um, you know, whether it was done with permit or without permit, it was, it has been completely cleared. And then they need to finish fixing whatever they've done. That's all.
Okay, Ms. Powell, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Eileen, do we have any, anyone else? You're muted.
Is there any other member of the public that has questions or comments on this application? Please use the raise your hand feature. I don't see anyone else raising their hand.
Okay, uh, this time I'll take a motion to close public.
Motion to close.
By who? Mr. Martins. Okay, motion by Mr. Martin. Do I have a second?
Second, Sayah.
Seconded by Mr. Sayah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I, I think really the only hiccup at this point is, is the landscaping.
It's hard to move forward with not knowing.
Yeah.
I, I think, uh, under a condition, you know, eh, they're go- they're gonna do something, I think it's gonna be nice too. You know, cause I, I have full confidence in Sherry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I have to say, I would like a, a little more direction. I understand Ms. Powell's concern. I mean, the site.
Yes.
Really is on, you know, it's unsightly. Uh, what is a timely matter? Are we gonna say, I understand the tree planting. I feel like the bigger issue right now is, is fixing it up. Cause like I said, it's, it's like a foot of tree stumps everywhere. Um, you know, and that looks probably worse than, you know, just like an open lawn.
Yeah, if it was clean and graded and, eh, you know, at least established the lawn, it, it would look nice.
Right, it's like a tree cemetery right now. So, um, it does not look nice, but, uh, you know, so I think maybe we should have some sort of, even if it's a rough timeline of, of, of what the board is expecting as far as cleanup and then planting and, you know, I, 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 I love that you guys are looking to plant, you know, a lot of trees, but a lot of times people say, uh, we're, we're looking to plant a lot of trees and they're talking about, you know, a four-foot tall crab apple and make a little, you know, flower orchard, eh, you know, what? I don't know if they're on the same page as trying to re-vegetate.
What is the timeframe of the yurt construction?
Uh, do you have an idea?
Summertime. We have to hopefully get approval, um, order it. Uh, they have to build it off-site, they get it delivered, so where it's the summertime.
Yeah, but what, what is your timeframe as far as completion of the year?
Uh, by end of the year.
By the end of the year, so sometime before twenty twenty-two, so.
We need a Woodlands Management slash Landscape Plan. You gotta, you're right, you gotta replace, you gotta replace those stumps and.
Not a Woodlands Management, uh, they, they need a landscape plan.
Landscape plan.
A landscape plan, yeah.
And, and time, time of, you know, time of completion, so. I, I don't know, Todd, eh, you're gonna have to work with Sherry, but I would say at least by the end of the year. You know, the, the, eh, the work, substantial amounts of the work needs to be completed. At least have the stumps out by sometime in this, by some.
We can get the stumps out relatively soon, within a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Aaron, give yourself a realistic timeframe, please. Eight weeks, it's okay. We just, you know, I don't want a condition of approval that does, we can't live up to.
Sure.
No, I, I, I totally agree, but it, you know, eh, eh, if you get the stumps and get the site cleaned up, that's gonna help a lot.
Yeah.
You know, from the surrounding people, but, you know, eh, I would say at least the landscape be done, you know, pretty much done at the end, you know, the time that the yard is completed. You know, I, that, that would be my suggestion.
We can get the stumps done within an eight-week timeframe.
Well, Todd, why don't we look at trying to like nail this down a little bit on stump removal and cleanup? Let's say something like forty-five days after, assuming that the board is voting on this tonight, after, um, memorialization of the, um, resolution? You know, just to tie it into a timeframe.
Yeah, that'll give you another thirty days, right? Something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, or forty-five, sixty, but I think what I'm hearing from the board is a rather tight timeframe to show, um, that the site is being cleaned up. It's something of that nature, Todd? And Mr. Chair?
I agree. I don't think the, uh, the temple has an objection to that.
Well, forty-five or sixty, Mr. Chair, what would you?
That's fine, forty-five or sixty, it doesn't.
So in other words, the si- the stumps will be removed and the site, let's say, cleaned up. Would that be acceptable within sixty days of, of memorialization of resolution?
Yeah, if, if, if the board looks favorable on it.
Correct.
Then, then as far as the landscape, you know, just like you said, Mr. Cohen, you know, work with Sherry. And then, you know, we'll get a preliminary, something back preliminary and kind of look at a timeframe. Uh, at that time with Sherry before we memorialize resolution and we can go from there.
Yeah, we, uh, we could submit like a landscape plan within thirty days after memorial, there's something to that effect. We're not looking to get away from the obligation. We just need some time to figure it out.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? I, I, I would try to hold to the completion of the whole site at the time of the, the yurt's completion or shortly thereafter.
That's very reasonable, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So just so I'm clear, uh, Mr. Chairman. Understanding that, um, there has to be a resolution, well, pardon me, there has to be an agreement with Sherry on a landscaping plan. Um, should the board vote it tonight, then, um, the understanding, again, uh, Mr. Chair, that I have is that the resolution will not be, uh, in other words, a vote would go through tonight, assuming a favorable vote, but the resolution itself will only be adopted after the board is presented with an appropriate landscaping plan that meets, uh, Sherry's approval and the board's approval. Is that right, Todd? Mike, is that correct?
Yes.
Um.
That's what I'm hearing. In other words, the board wants to see a plan before, assuming that.
I mean, normally, I'm just looking at timeframe. Normal, let's see if we can work this. Normally.
Let's bring Sherry in because she's.
The meeting would be, the resolution would be memorialized at the next, I mean, not next.
Play two meetings.
Yeah, so figure thirty days.
Yeah.
So Gary, can your office put together that type of plan in thirty days with the input from the club?
Sherry, we put set up a meeting out in the field and then we could come up with some kind of plan. Uh, me, you and Mr. Boudershop out there to take a look at the site and come up with a plan.
Yeah, I think that would be good, cause there's a few trees left. I wanna make sure that, you know, we're all on board, which ones are staying, which ones are going. So that, that would be helpful.
Okay.
That sounds great.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. One thing is, I would like to see some trees going in before the end of the season, because after the fall, which is gonna be about six months, we're gonna be looking in the winter and then it'll be next year. So, I think the, um, homeowner, I would like to see something to Sherry as far as getting some of the trees in before the end of the year. Yeah, they, that's what we, they were saying towards the end of the year with the yurt completion. So, you know, simultaneously, if they're doing some of it at the same time, you know, I, I think it would be very good, but get, get it in, have it completed pretty much at the same time by the, when the yurt's completed. You know, they, that's what we're looking at.
Hey, Sherry?
Yeah.
You think maybe a three-foot berm, is there a possibility? And throw some, throw some evergreens on top of it for, you know, before the end of the season? Does it get it started while you're planting trees to help?
It's small.
I'm saying, you know, whatever you can do to build it up a little bit for the residents that are at the sightly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't care either way, whether it's a berm. I think, I do, I would like to see some evergreens put in, not just, you know, deciduous trees, cause really these residents are looking right into the site.
Right, that, yes.
Yep, but Sherry will work that out. I, I really.
Something out with Sherry.
Okay.
Yeah, and then before, probably, if, if the board looks favorable on it, before the resolution's memorialized, we'll have a report back and a, a plan back from Sherry.
Yeah.
Uh, before we memorialize the resolution, if it's, goes favorable. So, yeah. Okay, is there any further questions of any of the applicant witnesses?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for my clarification, are we going to say that the, at least the stump removal will, will be completed? And, and the plan in place before we memorialize this?
No.
No, none of that.
No, the stumps are gonna be removed within sixty days as a condition of approval. Obviously, if we don't meet our conditions of approval, you don't have to give us a building permit for the rest, for the year.
Right.
Okay, that, that's, thank you for answering that.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Cohen, you want a summation?
Mr. Chairman, in light of the time, I will just, um, ask the board to rely on the testimony of our witnesses this evening. I think we've been able to address all the issues that were raised by both the board and the neighbors. I think the applicant has shown a desire to address those, um, those issues. And I would ask that the board act favorably this evening with the condition that we will submit the uh, plan to Sherry with her input and everybody meeting in the field within a reasonable time before the resolution is memorialized.
Thank you, sir. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a, I'd like to make a motion. I'm taking into consideration a couple of items. The lot consolidation, um, is gonna happen with it. I, I, I do believe we're leaving, uh, Lot Nineteen out, or maybe some, you know, potential sep- you know, separation there. Uh, adding the handicap parking spot, which was, which is a great idea, and I think we've really kind of really hashed out the, the tree situation. Um, I think the, the main thing I'd, I personally like to see, of course, is the, you know, the, the plan before memorialization, which it seems like we're gonna have that happen and clean up the stumps a bit as soon as possible, so that the neighbors can, can, you know, look at something nice and then obviously have the plan down the line. I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Do I have a second?
Say it, go on.
Hey, I have a second by Mr. Roscoe. Can we have a roll call, Eileen?
Mr. Cantor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Given the late hour, um, but it does behoove us to assist the Kama community in maintaining their, their presence and a contribution to our community. I'm proud to know that they're here. Uh, I've known that. I don't think many people in hell know that. And, and I'm very sensitive to the financial needs of the temple. I'm, I'm sure that, that what we're asking you to do is very expensive and we should, we should keep that in mind. Uh, but I'm gonna vote yes, uh, given that all the conditions are met for the, the landscaping plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Based on the testimony and the applicant's willingness to work with Sherry, I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Oroscow?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. St-
Mr. Stanton?
As long as they satisfy what Sherry needs, yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
I'm gonna say thank you for being a long-lasting neighbor within our community. I, I have been by there quite a few times. Uh, you know, it's nice to see that portion, that it's centralized the, of the community. You know, for people in your area that go to that temple. And my vote is yes, as long as all the requirements are need met. Towards the testimony that was been given before us tonight, my vote is yes also.
Motion carries.
Okay, good luck, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, thank you very much for your time and input this evening. I'm sure we'll be able to, uh, work the conditions out and get this done properly. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further business of the board? Wow, that was very silent.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Mr. Sayah, we will adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, good night, guys. Our next meeting is when?
April twelfth.
April twelfth.
Wow.
Y'all have a good Easter and we shall see you afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.